For which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
If you'll remain standing, Councilman Freddie Norris will lead us in our invocation.
I invite you to pray with me in your heart. Tonight we come to you Heavenly Father with our faith in you and our love for you. We look around this room and so many great people who have a part in your work here in Glasgow and we thank you. Tonight we come together to be one but yet with different, discussions on different issues and we need your help. We need your wisdom. We thank you for each one, the voice that they have for you and the voice they have for this community. We love Glasgow and we love the people. Thank you for the interest of so many to make things better, but we give you praise for it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. I'll now ask Clerk Mona Simmons to call the roll.
Benell. Gantz.
Yes ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Marion.
Yes ma'am.
Neal.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trig.
Here.
Witcher.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. What we need to do next is to approve the agenda. You were in receipt of a potential agenda in your packet that came on Thursday. I'll entertain a motion that we proceed using that agenda as it was presented.
Motion.
From Councilman Neal. Is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll continue with the agenda as it was presented to you on this past Thursday, which means that the next thing we need to do is to consider approving the minutes of the city council meeting that was held on February the 12th.
Motion Kirkpatrick.
Is there a second?
Second Marion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll call a question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes of that council meeting on February the 12th have been approved and will be entered into the record. We have several items of business to take care of tonight, but first we want to welcome to the microphone here where the podium is, a guest from Barren River Area Development District. This is Austin Sims. Austin is actually the transportation planner for Brad and there's an event coming up that he wants to talk to you about attending and to tell you more about it. So Austin, we're glad to have you here in Glasgow as always is the case and we want to hear from you about this meeting, sir.
Thanks for having me. Brad will be hosting another SED Summit. Last year we held our first one and we're going to have a smaller one this year at scheduled April 9th from 10:30 to 2:00 PM. We offering multiple different workshops regarding do's and don'ts of social media, bike and pedestrian planning, and creating age-friendly regions plus more. We're currently working with the LG to get credits so everybody who attends will receive credits regarding their position. To register, there is a QR code on the bottom. Also, there's Emily Hathcock, who is our associate director. Email her to register and you'll receive an email once your, or agenda, once you register. And that's all I have. I'll hand these out real quick.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to ask a question of Austin about this event? We really enjoy a wonderful relationship with Brad and we appreciate all the many wonderful opportunities you have for us. Thank you for taking the time to come over here and if somebody has a question, they'll be glad to bring you in and ask a question, okay?
Any questions?
Any questions? It's a neat opportunity. There's some, you know, you can go to that QR code and read a whole lot more about it too. All right?
Let me hand these out real quick.
Okay. All right. That'll be good. While you're doing so...
They're in the agenda. They're already in the packet.
Oh, they're already in the packet.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Austin.
Good evening, Mayor.
We want to, let me jump in here and let you know that we had a slight technical glitch, but now that's been corrected, so we will welcome Councilman Terry Benell to the meeting via Zoom. And Terry is here. He's present. He's counted as a part of the quorum and we're glad to have you here tonight, Councilman Benell. All right.
Thank you. Good evening.
We have one of my favorite things to do. We're going to swear in a new Glasgow police officer. I'm going to trade positions right here.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. At this time, I'd like Officer Wallen to come up. Officer John Wallen, he is a native Kentucky, was born in Somerset, raised in Albany, Kentucky, and graduated from Clinton County High School in 2010. After graduation, he attended Western Kentucky University, graduated in 2014, this is going to take a minute, with a Bachelor of Arts degree including sociology, criminology, and a minor in history. During that summer, he was an intern with alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, and in 2018 was hired by Western Kentucky PD. While serving with Western Kentucky Police Department, he received his Master of Arts degree in organizational leadership and graduate certificate for emergency management and disaster science. He served with Western Kentucky Police Department as a corporal, master police officer, and a law enforcement training officer. His most important part of his bio is the fact that he is married to his wife Jessica, who is here tonight. She's a nurse practitioner at the Med Center of Rural Health Clinic in Scottsville. He has his oldest son Noah and his youngest son Lucas here, along with his parents and his sister and his best friend and his soon-to-be coworkers. So Mayor, Officer Wallen.
All right. Well, first of all, anybody that's here in behalf of Officer Wallen, please raise your hand so we can recognize the fact that we are really tickled to have company right here. We're glad you all are here. And I'm going to, I'm glad that Jessica is here. I'm glad that he said your name because when I met you, I was also watching Nico out of the corner of my eye. I wasn't listening as close as I should have, so Jessica, we're glad to have you here to do this. So I'm going to give you the official oath of office and afterwards we will have a couple of signatures right here and we will welcome you to the Glasgow Police Force. If you'll kind of walk a little bit closer right here so we can pick this up. Are you ready? Raise your right hand. I, John Wallen, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of police officer for the city of Glasgow according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of this present constitution, I have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. I further solemnly swear that I am able to read and write the English language intelligently, that I am sober, moral, sagacious, and that I am at least 21 years of age, and that I have never been convicted of a felony, and that as a police officer for the city of Glasgow, I will not interfere in any election, and that I will endeavor to the best of my ability to detect and prosecute all gamblers and others violating the laws against gaming. Can you agree with that oath?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations and welcome to the Glasgow Police Force. Now, I want to have Jessica come over here and do the official penning ceremony. And I told her earlier, there is no time constraint on this. Just don't stab her. Wow. Looks to me, that was very good. That's very good, too. Now you got to sign.
Right there.
And then I will sign right here. That'll make it official. And I'll sign two other places so you can have your very own copy of this, all right? We are tickled to death to have you here and your resume is very impressive and I just feel like, I do know from talking with all of the folks over at the police department that they are just excited to have you as a part of the police force.
They're excited to be here.
All right.
Thank you so much.
All right. This is yours. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And the youngster back there was cheering for you, too. I like that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Chief?
Mayor, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Officer Penley to bring Nico forward. Nico is our newest police canine officer. He's a 20-month-old German Shepherd. He's from the Netherlands and is a dual-purpose canine. Nico and his human partner, Officer Penley, were trained by Canine Command in Gallatin, Tennessee, and is certified through the United States Police Canine Association. He is certified in field trials, in narcotics detection, and criminal apprehension. Nico's dual purpose will be utilized for, like I said, narcotics detection, article detection, tracking, criminal apprehension. And he will not only be available for the Glasgow Police Department primarily, but he would be willing to assist in the other agencies in and around Barren County. Officer Penley and Officer Nico. I don't think he's quite sure about that.
There's no oath, right?
There's no oath.
Well, I'll tell you what, he is one handsome hound. Congratulations. I can tell he's very attached to you as well. Thank you very much. We're glad to have Nico here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
These are just exciting, exciting things to see added to our police department, bringing us into having our next canine onboard and our next quality officer, and it's something to be proud of. Just like something to be proud of is our participation in the Drug Task Force. So we are going, thank you all for being here tonight, by the way, with the Wallen family here. I am going to call to the podium, a familiar face, but it's a, it's an operation that does a very impressive job. This is Ron Lafferty. Ron is the Director of the Drug Task Force and this is hard to believe, Ron, the 20th anniversary of the Drug Task Force. And there's a big celebration that is going to be going on and the year-end review, so Ron Lafferty, the Director of the Drug Task Force. The floor is here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. As the Mayor said, 20 years, well, 2003 to 2023, last year was our 20th anniversary. This starts the 21st year. I want to give a review of the 20 years, which I'll make it short, and then I want to give a year-end review for 2023. Chief, he asked me to speak at the Rotary Club, what was it, last week or this week? Last week. And I told him, I said, raise your hand when I've gone over my time. Well, he raised it two or three times, but I try not to be as long as I was at the Rotary Club.
Okay.
Most of y'all know who I am or we've met or talked. I don't know you, sir, but I apologize.
Max Marion.
Max Marion. Nice to meet you, Mr., or Councilman Marion. I was hired as a police officer in 1999. In 2004, I was hired by the Barren County Sheriff's Department as a Drug Task Force detective. I worked there for 10 years. 2014, I became Director. One of the things that I promised when I became Director is to educate the public on the trends, the things that's going on in our community. And I've done, I don't know how many programs I've done to educate people, but I enjoy coming here and telling you all what's going on and take any questions that you happen to have for me. I think it's important that everybody knows what's going on in our community, what problems we're facing, what we're seeing, and things we're doing to try to make it better. The members of the task force is the Glasgow Police Department, Barren County Sheriff's Department, Cave City Police Department, and Metcalf County. We're hoping to expand soon, but I won't get into that right now. I am the Vice President of the KNOA, which is Kentucky Narcotics Office Association, a member of the NNOAC, which is the National Narcotics Office Association. And the reason I bring that up, it's not to gloat on me, and that's, that's not what it is, is that with the task force, you get a lot more than just a few police officers fighting drugs. The KNOA and the NNOAC, first of February, we went to Washington DC and we meet with different congressmen and senators to discuss the problems we're having in Glasgow and Barren County and Metcalf County. We get a sit-down opportunity with, see, we met with Senator McConnell, Senator Guthrie, or I'm sorry, Congressman Guthrie, Congressman Coomer, Congressman Andy Barr, and we also had three other task force with us. We had the South Central Drug Task Force, the Greater Hardin Task Force, and the Bowling Green Warren County Drug Task Force. And for the task forces in Kentucky, those are the three main ones that are, or four main ones that's represented in Washington DC, this little area of home. And that means a lot when the NNOAC is asked by members of Congress to participate in legislation of how we can combat the problems that we're having right now, what we can do to help fund the problems we're having right now. So you're not only getting a little small area Drug Task Force, you're getting a whole, pretty much, nation work together. We've worked with the FBI, the DEA, ATF, Homeland Security, US Postal Inspector, and when you have this many agencies, just, let's just take our home right here right now. We've got Glasgow, we've got Barren County Sheriff, Cave City, Metcalf County, all of our officers are talking with one another. When we have a problem, I won't pick on what sides of the city, let's just say one part of Glasgow, and we got another part in Barren County, and when these officers are communicating with each other, we're finding out there's connections to both these places. So we know where to focus on to get the person above that's supplied. And with the national level, I'll give you an example. Two years ago, I believe it was, we got a contact, someone from Texas contacted Tennessee and said, there's a large shipment of what we believe is fentanyl pills coming to your area. Tennessee missed it, so they called us and they say, hey, you know, because we knew them, most times police officers will call other officers they know. We knew them. They called us and they said, hey, I think we've missed it. Here's what's coming into your area. So we set up on I-65, we waited four hours, but finally found the vehicle, made a stop on it, and took off, I think it was 9,000 fentanyl pills that was coming. It was actually going to Columbus, Ohio, but we know what happens when it goes. It goes north and it runs downhill. So it may have been going to Columbus, but it was all going to, not all, but a lot of it was going to come back down here because we're having, like everybody else, a huge fentanyl problem. So to say that, and I won't go on too much, that's what you're getting with the task force. It's not just here, it expands. We work cases out of state sometimes, out of county sometimes, but every case starts here. We work on something, we follow to where it leads. Now, we don't have any authority in some other counties, we don't have authority in other states. That's why we have our federal partners, because they do. So we can get people that's bringing stuff in. For example, we sent two detectives to California a couple of years ago that was working a case. They were shipping methamphetamine into Barren County. We called the guy that was getting it, found out who was shipping it, sent them out there and got them, and arrested them. They went for federal charges. So I think that is a great thing when you have all these agencies working together for the common good and it's in Barren County. And it's, it's awesome to watch, it's awesome to see, it's awesome to see all these agencies working together. The city of Glasgow, I can't say enough about the chief, all the officers and city council mayor, y'all have been fantastic to work with, always been supportive, and you don't know how much we appreciate that, and I'm sure the citizens of this community appreciate that. Going on, the mission of the Drug Task Force is to prosecute mid and upper-level drug traffickers. We get a lot of calls for users. If we focused on just users, we would never be able to cut the head off the snake. So that's what we're designed to do, to go to mid and upper-level drug traffickers. The 20th anniversary I talked about, I had flooded you all with information in the things that were handed out. So I'll touch on a few of them, but y'all can read the rest, and if you've got any questions, please ask. In the 20 years that we've been together, the Drug Task Force has taken, what, 83 pounds of methamphetamine off the streets. We have seized almost $9 million worth of drugs off our community streets. We have seized 451,000 in like guns and computers and other property such as that, vehicles in the 20 years. Looks like we've got 4,044 cases we've worked. Now, if you look at that one chart right here, it's this one right here. You'll see there's, I'm assuming y'all have it in color, there's two colors. There's a blue and a red. The blue was the seizures of meth from meth labs. We all remember the days of the meth labs, they were everywhere. It was a bad time in all of our areas. But now we got crystal meth. That's what's in red on your charts. We thought we had a bad problem with meth labs and the meth produced from meth labs. No, not so much. If you'll look at 2021, that was a record year. I never dreamed we would surpass that much meth. 2022 hit. We did beat it. And then 2023 hit. Never in a million years would I thought we would seize that much meth. Meth is a huge problem. It's, people ask me, why are we seeing that much? I don't play politics, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole, but the plain, simple fact is, our borders are open. However, whoever's the cause of whatever the reason, that's why so much is coming across. And used to, we would pay a hundred dollars for a gram of meth back in several years ago. That's what it was worth, a hundred dollars a gram, sometimes more. Now you can buy an ounce for 300. That's how cheap it is. I mean, it is dirt cheap. 2024, you can see, we're only in the second month, almost towards the end, and we're already, I think, over close to six pounds. So I'm afraid that 2024 is going to be close to 2023 if not surpass. The next, the page, the next page is just a condensed version of what I just showed you from 2014 to 2024. Our firearms in 2023 was the largest we've ever seized, with everybody knows with most drug dealers are firearms. And I'm glad to get those firearms off the streets. Like I said, we deal with drug traffickers, so just about every one of these firearms were taken off drug traffickers. The fentanyl sheet, you see, 2023 was a record year for us for fentanyl, with the exception of the one year where we had the 9,000. That's not on this chart because that would elevate and it'd just be out of proportion of what happened. That was a one-time hit, but these are from many, many cases. 2024, we're getting ready to pass 2023. The prescription pills, on the other hand, have gone down thanks to legislation where if you go to a doctor and you're prescribed Schedule II or Schedule III pills, you have to go back every month to get it renewed. It's hard to doctor shop anymore, so I'm glad to see, at least that has gone down. The heroin has almost not existed anymore because of fentanyl. They've gotten away from that and new legislation with fentanyl is starting to help anyway. I won't get into all the different rules, but they've got good legislation going on, some more coming out. My last one. This sheet right here is a breakdown of everything that happened in 2023. When I keep stats, I keep stats because I never know what agency is going to ask me what. It's a breakdown of how much of each thing was seized in Barren County, in the city of Glasgow, in Cave City, Metcalf, and what we have as other is maybe another county or somewhere we've gone to with a federal agency. As you can see, of the nearly 30 pounds that we have seized, I believe close to 12 pounds of it was in the city of Glasgow for its crystal meth. Let's see, that was, I think, 39%. The powdered cocaine was 64%. 90% of all the fentanyl we've got was in the city of Glasgow. The Schedule II pills, 30%. Schedule III was 89% and so forth. Like I said, I won't go into every single one of them. The drugs confiscated in the Glasgow in 2023, street value was $460,962, the street value. Well, I can't get my page to flip, sorry. Mayor, city council, I guess in closing, again, I just want to say thank you for all your support. I have been, this is my 25th year in law enforcement, 24 of it, or well, 20 of it, has been fighting drugs, but even when I was a street officer, that was what I enjoyed doing is going after drug dealers and trying to get drugs off our streets. If there's anything that you want to ask me, feel free to ask me, but again, thank you for your support, chief. Thank you for your support. The city council, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ron. And while we have you here, I would ask any of the council members that maybe you have a curious curiosity about something. He's very well-versed and his agency is very well-versed in protecting our community. I would be entertaining you to ask any questions you would like to ask.
Mr. Lafferty, I am not curious, I am thankful for what you do, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ron, I would just say thank you for all you do. You know, I've watched you over the years and you and your group, you do amazing stuff, so thank you would be the word I'd use.
Well, thank you very much.
Ron, every year, I probably beat you up on the same, same issues every year.
It's okay.
So, news I start with, you say you caught or you gathered this amount of drugs. How much do you think you actually got?
What do you mean?
10% of the drugs that's arriving in Glasgow, 20%. Once before, you gave, last year, you gave me some numbers.
Right. To tell you what percentage we're getting, I have no way of measuring that. I'm... I apologize. I wish I could tell you we were getting fifty percent. I wish I could tell you we're getting twenty percent or ninety percent. I don't know. Every time we get a lead on something, we follow it the best we can. We just completed nearly a three-year investigation and got one of the bigger traffickers in Glasgow and Barron County, along with nineteen other people that were involved. And that was a total of, now, over the three years, that was a total of about twenty-five pounds of crystal meth, along with fentanyl and cocaine and other stuff. And about half of them were going to be prosecuted in federal court because of such a large organization.
And we always agree not to be political, but, you know, I'm sitting here, you know, you gave us a charge, I'm sitting here, so you know, you can see the direct correlation between, say, the rise in crystal meth, fentanyl. You can see the, marijuana, I mean, well, say cocaine and heroin have bottomed out, but, you know.
Cocaine's back on the rise.
And, you know, as we talked about last year, what I said was, of those three, or those four major ones, you know, the marijuana captures are the ones you're catching, but the substitute is the other two. You know, if you can't get, let's just say, if you can't get regular and decent marijuana, then they spice up or add additions of crystal meth and fentanyl.
Well, there's a contrast between the two. Fentanyl and heroin is a completely different drug than marijuana. I mean, I think, I take what you're asking, but those are completely two different things.
And I guess where I'm going is, is it seems like countrywide, worldwide, those are the replacements for, say, marijuana.
Well, I think the, in the fentanyl area, that's the replacement for the opioids. The opioid crisis we was having with prescription drugs, since that's been toned down, that's being replaced with the fentanyl. The rural areas of the United States has always been meth. That's when we had the meth labs. But now that crystal meth, which is a lot more pure than what was being made here, and there's such an abundance of it, there's no reason to make meth anymore. And people that were addicted to meth, more likely aren't addicted to fentanyl, but we're seeing a growing supply of it right now.
See, and you've been doing this twenty years, and we've known each other
Long time.
For the majority of that timeframe.
Yes, sir.
And, I don't know the right word for it.
That's okay.
The demand stays. It seemed like the demand, you know, we capture more of the bad guys, take more of the drugs off the street, but the demand is, is, you got any recommendations on how to leave, how do we attack the true root of the problem, which is the demand, not so much the supply?
Well, I can answer that, but a lot of people don't like that answer.
All right, we'll take it.
Okay.
I'll be, as I'm busy, I'll put you on.
So, all right, society has to invest in a long-term rehabilitation. I'm sorry that when it comes to fentanyl, especially methamphetamine, thirty days usually don't work. If you're a hardcore methamphetamine addict, you're not gonna have withdrawals for ninety to a hundred and twenty days. So obviously thirty days isn't gonna work. If we don't create some kind of six-month in-house program, it's gonna be hard to get it under control. Because usually when someone completes six months' program in-house, the withdrawals are gone, and they've worked on themselves, getting their true self back to them, realizing what's important to their lives, then they can begin to regroup. But when you only have thirty days, and I'm not trying to put thirty-day programs down, I am, just with methamphetamine. A lot of thirty-day programs work for other things, so, but you asked the question. You're gonna have to have a long-term program for just about anything to work. I mean, alcoholism, drugs, you've got to get them, first, get the withdrawals over. Second, you gotta build them back up, get them to believe in their self again. In a six-month pro, I would, I would rather have a year, to be honest about it, but you're gonna have at least a minimum six months in order to get everything under control. Now, that's gonna take a lot of money in the beginning, but I believe in the end, it's, it would work.
So, as I get ready to let you go, we appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
We realize Kentucky just legalized medical marijuana. What's the plan from the Drug Task Force as far as that goes?
We don't really have a plan until we see the legislation and the laws that has been passed and get to read it. The CANDO way, we'll get together and we'll discuss the various options of what we need to do, what we can do, what we don't need to do, and go from there. But as a plan right now, I can't until I see all the laws and the rulings. But thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ron. Appreciate you being here and appreciate what you all do every single day. There's a peace of knowing that you all know what you're doing and are working toward the goals of having better numbers each year, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We enjoy having company. We learn so much from having guests here. We appreciate you being here. I'm going to, now, I think we need to move into some old business. Rich?
Mayor, this next item is the reconsideration and discussion of potential acceptance of West Main Street property from Patrick Gauntz. I will say, for the council, if you all were looking for a resolution in your package, there, obviously there was none. I did not prepare a resolution. I felt it was best to just let the council deliberate, and then whatever the decision is, is what it is, and we can follow up with a written resolution if need be. But that's why you did not find a resolution in your package.
And for the record, Councilman Gauntz has agreed to abstain from voting and to abstain from discussion. So...
That's right. Now, I'll leave room when the vote, but I, you're correct on both. I'll abstain from any conversation or any voting.
All right.
But when it gets ready to vote, I'll get happy if you don't mind to help me get up there.
Okay, all right, that'll be fine. So, what we have is, we have reconsideration and discussion of the item that was brought the last time about the city accepting a donation of property on West Main Street. At this point, we're, to the point where we were the last council meeting, where we would consider a motion to approve the acceptance of this property. I would open up the floor to entertain a motion that we accept the property.
Mayor, before we do that, Patrick, since we're peers here, we work together, all of us do, would you like to abstain before we do anything, even the voting and discussion?
Yeah, I'm just gonna abstain.
Okay.
That's what I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna discuss anything or, probably not.
Okay.
All right, so we are, right now where we are is, is we need to know if we have a motion to proceed with this. That's the way that the procedure would be, is that we have introduced it, we read it the last time, we need a motion and a second to get discussion up on the floor, and that would be the Roberts Rule procedure.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, who did the second? Joe? Okay, all right, so we have a motion by Councilman Neal, and we have a second by Councilman Trigg. So, at this point, we'll open up the floor for discussion of the acceptance of this property.
I just, the only thing I'm looking at, have we done appraisal on the property yet?
Yes, we have that appraisal. I think Rich has the appraisal.
Can you explain the tax credit, that it doesn't really cost the city any kind of money but the cleanup?
Sure.
I think people are misunderstanding that.
Uh, Councilman Neal, I've, there has been some discussion about quote-unquote "a tax credit." That's a little bit of a misnomer. If the council approved the acceptance of this property, which was a donation offer from Mr. Gauntz, it would be very similar to if you go to church and you write a check to your church, it would be a contribution. If you wrote a check to any nonprofit organization that's a 501(c)(3), anything like that, it would be basically a tax deduction, just like any other deduction from a charitable contribution. There would be no certificate issued from the city that says you're getting a tax credit or anything of that nature. Those are programs administered through the revenue cabinet and totally different from what we're talking about here. This would just be a charitable contribution, and Mr. Gauntz would be able to deduct that from his taxes, just like any other charitable contribution.
So it would be nothing but, nothing for the city to pay?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, there's, the floor is open for further discussion.
I'll go next.
Go.
Okay, first of all, Patrick, I'm directing this to you. I have no ill will toward you whatsoever, and I would be speaking on these facts regardless of who owned the property. I just want that to be said. Okay, so I have spoke to Morgan Patterson at KLC, Director of Municipal Law, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. April Russell, City Administrator. On January the fourth, April sent me a text saying that the article wrote, "On September twentieth, twenty twenty-three by Glasgow News One" was completely false, and she had no idea where it came from, referring to Melinda Overstreet stating where April had went to Mr. Gauntz inquiring, suggesting that Mr. Gauntz donate property for a pocket park. I have spoke to Jamie Bealy Bird, Judge Executive, January the eighth, twenty twenty-four. She stated to me that she did not want the property, and neither did the county attorney. She did not approach Mr. Gauntz about it, as she stated. So this leads me to some questions. Why are people having misinformation about this? When this happens, it looks like something's being hidden, and we definitely shouldn't be doing that. We should be transparent. Why are we just now hearing that the wall is in bad shape when in reality the part needing the most attention is what the city owns behind the vacant lot that the county owns, which we have had access to for three years? Has a contract been drawn up between the city and Mr. Gauntz on this property? If so, I haven't seen it. I'm not saying that there isn't or there is. Has someone saw an appraisal? I haven't, but I just heard that you have one. Before I could ever move forward on this, I would need to read a contract and the appraisal. Any update on grants? I have, I have heard from April there might be some grant money to help on the demolition of this. I don't know about that. Is it a common practice that the city writes tax credits to owners for properties such as this? I use the phrase "tax credit" because that is what the mayor used in the December twenty-first article in the Glasgow News One. Just found out it's called a tax deduction. Okay, also, the certificate of abatement. Is that?
We have that, too.
Okay. Um, there's more. Hold on, I'm almost done. So now we have come to find that we need additional parking for the Judicial Center, which would be overflow parking. The city owns the Cultural Center, which has over fifty parking spaces, and people wouldn't have to cross a busy state highway to get to the Judicial Center. It's within four hundred feet from the primary entrance and very safe, flat and level, no need for stairs or sidewalks, as the city would have to put that money forward. Okay, if, if Mr. Gauntz ever decided that he would like to sell his building next to this property for private economic investment for new business and/or residences, and they needed more property to complete the investment, would this land be tied up with an overflow of parking to the Judicial Center? And, one more thing, I've heard there's no cost to the city. We all know everything has a price. There's a cost to everything. City employees doing an extra job that they wouldn't normally be doing, a dump bill, it's costing the taxpayers money for us to be sitting here right now speaking. There's a cost to everything, nothing is free. I have one other article, not article, but I have one other conversation to be talked about, but I want to wait before we adjourn at the end.
Now, wait a minute, say that again.
I have another piece of, doesn't pertain to the property, but I want to discuss something to the council at the end before we adjourn. That's all I'm gonna say.
Is there other discussion?
Six to eight weeks ago, this topic was introduced to the council from the Finance Committee. Initially, it was going to cost between seventy and a hundred thousand at the expense of our hard-working citizens to create another pocket park. Let me remind you, council, that there is a pocket park directly across the street that is rarely used. I personally went to the location, known as the Gauntz property, and looked everything over. If the wilderness that's growing behind the building was removed, we would have plenty of room to make repairs to the wall that's in question. That being said, that wall has been there for God knows how many years, so why this is a concern now is beyond me. Before we had any discussion, Terry Bannell wanted to send us back to the Finance Committee. Now, here we are with this topic again, but instead of a pocket park, it's now a parking lot. Patrick still owns the building to the left, and the county owns the building to the right. So, council, I ask you this. Why would we accept a property and spend the citizens' money to making a parking lot for these two entities? Patrick said he was approached by the city and county. I spoke to Judge Jamie Bird, and she stated that she has not had a conversation with Patrick, although April Russell did speak to Patrick about this. April is our city administrator, and by definition, that role is to ensure the needs of the citizens are met. Council, this is not a need by the citizens. And in fact, I have had several citizens approach me via phone and in person. They do not want this, and as a representative of them, we should not either. It was also stated that the parking could be used for the Justice Center. I stepped off fifty-two parking spots at the Culture Center. So, council, there are a lot of words that begin with the letter P. We have pocket park, parking lot, property, but one that should be on our mind, that doesn't seem to be right now, is people. The majority, and when I say majority, I mean majority of the hard-working people do not want this at their expense. If Patrick had this building sold, that would be the best thing for Glasgow. Someone could invest in repairing the building that is in our need of, just as everyone's on the square that's being done or has been done. But again, if the forest behind the building was removed, there's plenty of room to make repairs to the wall that we have neglected for years.
More discussion?
Mayor, is there, is this a precedent of some type? Is this like the first time that we've ever had somebody to donate property to the city? And are we doing something that's never done before? What does this look like?
Well, I'm not capable of going back very far. I, you know, I'll tell you that there's been other things donated to the city from a standpoint of property in the past, a long time ago, for various reasons, from foundations, from estates, things of that nature. I don't know that this is a precedent as much as it is an opportunity to, if, you know, if we, you know, we had the discussion in the Finance Committee about the fact that we own the parking lot that is supported by the wall. Now, that was a discussion, I think it was Jim McGowan was the one that had gone over there and measured all of that off. Jim McGowan has a degree in engineering, and I'm taking what he says as what it needs to be. I could go over there and look at it as a layperson and give you some idea, but as the mayor, I have to rely on the people who do this for a living, not for fun. And so I am really leaning on what he says, that that wall is someday gonna cause us a lot of trouble when it comes time to maintaining our parking lot. And then, with the Project Development Board saying, we're gonna have to, I don't know, Max, I don't know why the Project Development Board is not looking at the parking lot over there at the Cultural Center. I don't know. This was a part of the discussion of the Project Development Board coming out, and Kevin Mied explained all of that to us. So it's not like, it's not like that this body really has any say-so on where they put parking. They just said, we can give them the variance because this parking lot over there is available. So that was another reason to say, well, if we have an opportunity to maintain this, then we need to do it. Now, as far as I'm concerned, the day might come where we have to go in there and build a wall, and somebody comes along and they put up a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar building in that same space, we still gotta get to the wall. It'll just be, instead of costing us, what, five thousand dollars, it'll cost us two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars plus the cost. That's the whole thing that we're thinking about. Do we, as the people who are managers of the finances of the city, the price of that property is not gonna go down. The price of that property, no matter who owns it, is going to continue to climb. The building, the facility where Yancey's is sold for a tremendous amount of money. The... The Barron County Board of Education sold for a tremendous amount of money. Down here at the Morris Building, they are making that a showplace. So if you look at the value of property around the square, I'm not really sure. I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, is that Mr. Gaunt's is... I'm thinking he could keep it and make a whole lot more money. But it's gonna be really expensive if we need to have that to get in there to take care of that wall, which is why that I think we need to think about the reason rather than the person.
Well, I think in that finance, last meeting of the Finance Committee, that Jim said that the cost for fuel to take that, those two pieces of property down was somewhere around five thousand dollars, and that would be done by staff, the staff at the landfill, and we have the equipment to do it. So we're looking at approximately five thousand dollars as far as we know. And we don't know. We don't know whether it's a parking facility or a little mini-park or what it would be. I think as we want to spend the money correctly. It's not our money. But if you look at what might be needed in the future, I think that comes into play with what we would need to vote on. So that's my thoughts on it.
If I can ask Kevin a question, if that would be okay? Because Kevin spoke at length about this at the Finance Committee meeting that I sent out a reminder about the Finance Committee meeting. Kevin, where is the parking actually going? The variance speaks that the overflow parking will go in the current city parking lot, correct?
That's correct.
That no one ever said we were gonna tear down the buildings and put a parking lot right there?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what...
The variance was sought out by the applicants. We, we as the staff for the city don't direct individuals to, "You gotta park here and you gotta park there." They wanted to make an arrangement with the city to be able to park in the public parking lot up there. That was their prerogative to choose this one. Why they didn't choose the one at the Cultural Center? That's their deal.
Well, I would assume the Cultural Center utilizes their parking lot for their patrons.
Correct. Majority of their patrons is, that's what the spots are there for. Now, that's not to say that you can't have an agreement made, but that's not what the applicants came before the Board of Adjustments to seek. They sought out the property up here at the top. It was within four hundred feet of an entrance. Not a building entrance, a property entrance, is what it states. So with regards to the property, it's just happenstance that it's adjacent to the public parking that's up there. What you guys do with it in the future is your own responsibility, but...
Kevin, while you're on that, just for the sake of transparency and the record, and I just know this because I'm on the Judicial Center Committee, but it relates to Councilmember Lowry's question. The parking variance was asked for by the Barron County Public Properties Corporation, but as it stands right now, can you tell the council about the need for that? I think that's some information.
So one of the points that came up was that they had to have X amount of parking, which is roughly a hundred and eighty-three to a hundred and eighty-five spaces. And when their initial design that they gave to us was around a hundred and sixty-three, a hundred and sixty-four spaces, so they had to seek out a variance to have adjacent property within, parking within four hundred feet. Since that time period, it, they have redone a bit of that since it's preliminary, and they do actually have the parking requirements that they're gonna have to have for the hundred and eighty-three spaces on the property. So as far as seeking out the variance, we were at a spot where they wanted to cancel the meeting on a Thursday afternoon. There's no way for us to notify the public in time to cancel the meeting. So they held the meeting. It lies within the four hundred feet, meets all of the statutes and the ordinances that the city of Glasgow requires. This is not the first time the Board of Judgment has met to grant a variance for additional parking on adjacent property. And they thought, "Well, it'd be prudent if, if, well, that doesn't work, then, and they do have to have extra parking outside of the hundred and eighty-three spaces, they could still utilize the parking on the square up here as well." They chose that one. It's not our responsibility as the staff to tell them, "No, you have to pick this one over here." It's their responsibility. The burden is on the applicant to make those measures.
So there's not a variance needed right now?
There's not a variance needed. There was a variance granted, but the variance wasn't needed at the time.
But you have all the parking covered, right?
It's my understanding that the engineer, Engineering Engineers, has stated that, sent me an email that they do have the adequate parking on the property. Now, having said that, there was no discussion for the property beside it that you guys are discussing tonight about parking there because it's not the city's party. So this variance was just for the adjacent property.
So it's gonna be the Department of Public Works that demolished the building, correct? So, I mean, are they, I mean, they have expertise in this? Have they done that before, or are we gonna be having a liability issue with them tearing down buildings?
The Director of the Department of Public Works is here, Jim McGowan, who has analyzed all of this situation because we need to cover all bases when we're considering something like this. Jim, you wanna talk about that?
Yes. Max, you know, first of all, there is, there is specialized demolition contractors that actually tear stuff like this down. When you get into two- and three-story buildings, that's where, that's where the specialization comes in. There's certain ways to tear buildings down and keep them from going one way or the other. We're essentially talking about a one-story building here that's, it is, it is tied to another building, but the way I understand it, from what I've seen on the inside of the building, it's tied to with some face brick and some lumber nails, all of these. Basically, what we're tearing down is essentially a house here in Glasgow that's attached to, you know, it's, there is gonna be some traffic issues that we'll have to deal with, dumpster placement and stuff like that, but it's where the Department of Public Works is more than capable of turning this building down.
So how long will the road be shut down leading to the square for this?
Well, there'll be, there'll be a little bit of planning that needs to go on. There'll be, there'll be certain times where we can load this out. We can, we can tear down a portion of the building and pile it up, and then actually haul it off at different times. And we would, we would try to schedule that times, times to haul that off, Max. We're, you know, before school traffic, after school traffic, sometimes during the middle of the day. I mean, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to be doing that during rush hour, of course.
Would that be similar to the Morris Building here where they had to close down a portion of the street to pull that out? So that's been done around this area before?
Yes.
But when you start building the retaining wall to protect the wall that we own, having access, we won't be having to have a whole lot of blockage of the road because we can get back in there and do the actual job, do the actual wall with that access. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
That is, that is correct.
So if you, either way, if you come back to the safety of the wall, and I know that you've checked that out. My, one of my questions was, and this may or may not be whether we get the property or take that as a gift, but if the, if the wall needs to be repaired in some way, and you had a situation like part of it caved in, and there was somebody in a car up there? Either way, whether the property is given and we receive it or not, that could be a big deal too. Somebody's hurt, somebody's life is taken, so that's another consideration.
Yeah, and that's, that's, to me, that's the scary part because it's our parking lot. So we have to be able to maintain it so that it doesn't do that.
Why haven't we done that?
I can't answer that. I don't know why we haven't done that.
I don't, I don't understand why we're just now talking about the wall if it's been in bad shape for such a long period of time, and it's been known.
I think he can answer questions about the condition of the wall, plus the part that the Barron County Fiscal Court owns.
Yes. Well, visually, the, the wall behind the county property looks really bad. It is separated by, I think, two, two to three inches, best I could tell, from, from what we would be acquiring would be the... It is in a lot better condition visually. No one, no one knows the, the condition of either wall until we get a structural analysis done on it. And visually, the one that looks the worst may not be the worst. But certainly, the wall, wall behind this, this property that we're talking about, it does, it does look good, and to me, I mean, I'm just talking, this is my opinion. It may, it may last for a while, but if it ever comes to a point where we do need to work on that wall, there's, there's, there's actually a party wall that's, when I, when I say party wall, it's a, it's a division wall between two, two parcels of ground where the county building was at, and they've actually tore it down. That party wall that's left there that goes all the way back, and it's eight to ten feet tall against the wall that we're looking at, we actually own that wall too. We, we would own that wall too. And looking at it, it looks like it's in rough shape too. Like I said, only structural analysis will determine that.
It just seems to me that the, the wall behind the county building is worse. And if we do this and, and we go forward, and then they don't repair their part...
Yeah, it's the, it's...
Behind the county, I'm...
But it's all our parking lot, so we would have to fix it all the way down through there to protect our parking lot.
Actually, that may not be true. I've talked to Judge Executive, and I don't have anything on paper, but I think there'd be cooperation in it.
Yeah, well, I mean, oh, no, I don't think anybody wants the parking lot to fall. I think cooperation, I think everybody wants to do what's right to make sure that we maintain what we own, and the safety of it is of the utmost importance. And we have an engineer who's telling us, you know, that it, we won't know without further analysis about what it is. That's the number one thing to remember, is that we don't know what's behind the wall. We just know the, that it's been there a while, and parts of the wall that's holding it up are deteriorating. Can't speak for what you can't see.
Regardless if this property is gifted or not, the wall has to be fixed, correct?
That's right.
And we have access to the wall without the property being gifted or not, correct?
I don't think we do because there's a building sitting there. Can't get equipment in there. We can't, we can't build the forms to build the concrete.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Because it's an enclosed space. There's a wall on each side, correct?
This, this property that we're looking at, there, there is a retaining wall. When I, when I say retaining wall, it's a, the party wall that I, that I mentioned earlier. It goes from the sidewalk all the way back to this one, this wall that, that we're all talking about. And it's eight to ten feet tall. I can't, I can't remember. I didn't, I didn't throw a tape on to see exactly, but usually you can stand and tell what the eight to ten feet is. That is basically an enclosed swimming pool area, per se. There is some drainage tile back there that actually goes underneath the buildings that runs out to the drainage out, out on the street. And in order to fix that wall with a building there like it is right now, I mean, we can, we can... There's, there's several companies that can, that can build walls like that, but you're talking about jib cranes and these, these massive concrete farm trucks that has, has to set up our, our parking lot. And if that wall were, were to fall, I mean, how, how would they set that equipment up on top? I mean, I'm, I'm just, the, the amount of construction costs that would be involved if we waited that further down the road. If this, if this lot is sitting there empty with nothing on it, it would be, it would be much cheaper to fix the wall if we needed to.
You make a good point, Marta, is the fact that the wall is gonna have to be dealt with. Can we deal with it for five thousand dollars? Not after today.
Mayor, what would be your plan for the property if it was gifted?
For the property? I would want to clean it off and wait and see what interest there was. I've heard about pocket parks and stuff like that. There is no plan for anything to happen there. In other words, the whole purpose of that is the fact that we own property behind it that we're gonna have to get in a position to maintain. I don't, I'm not, I don't have a, a vision. I know there's like a pocket park in Scottsville, a few places like that where...
Just one across the road.
Yeah, well, well, I wouldn't, I don't know, it's a... If that's what a pocket park is, I mean, I, I don't really know. Ms. Russell is the only person that's, to my knowledge, that's used the word "pocket park", and your name has come up. Do you wanna tell us what a pocket park is?
Thank you, Jim. Sure. So I wanna make sure I at least clarify what that text message... Martin always keeps me on my toes. It was actually a post that was made on a social media site, and it took a piece of Melinda's writing, and it highlighted it so that they would highlight my name. And what it says is, without quotation marks, because it's gone now, but I went back and found the article, "Gaunt's decided the cost of the demolition was more than he wanted to expend, and April Russell, now the new city administrative officer, grant writer and administrator, gave him a possible solution for what to do with the property a few months ago." That is false. That is not how that conversation went, and that is completely made up. I did not do that. He did not come to me. He never said that. So that part, I don't know about the rest of the article. I didn't read it tonight. That one paragraph that was highlighted on social media was completely and is completely false.
That's the, that's what I was talking about.
Yes, well, you said the whole article, so I wanted to make sure...
No, I don't think I did.
But that's okay. Either way, we're all clear. We're clear that that is the one. I wanted to quote it so that I made sure that what I spoke of was true. A lot of you guys, like Councilman Marion, has said that, you know, I'm not looking out for the people, that that's not what this, this isn't about a pocket park. Last April, Judge Bird called me and said, "Sir 309 is gonna come clean up the county area that, beside the attorney's office. Can you guys help provide a dumpster?" And we did. We, we provided a dumpster. Sir 309 came. They cleaned up that area. I was up there with them. I think I even have some pictures. They worked really hard. They cleaned up a lot of rubble, a lot of different things. She said it had been brought to her attention, that a pocket park would be great there. We went up there. We looked at it. We seen what needed, how nice it would be for a wall that, just like behind the attorney's building, to come down through there and go all the way, grass and a nice set of stairs. That is how that began. There is no other story. That is facts. And she will tell you that very same thing. That's exactly how it started. I did not know who owned the property. I had no idea. I had to look it up. When I first brought it to him, he told me, "No. My job is to take projects that the mayor wants, Judge Bird wants, Parks and Rec want. When they want a project done, my job is to find out if they are feasible, if the city wants them, if the council wants them." This is an April's project. If we don't take the buildings, that's fine. If we do take the buildings, it will look nice. That's it. What I will tell you is the Downtown Business Association and the Garden Club have approached us on numerous times lately, asking us to help with down North, North Green, bringing, because there's businesses down there, and they would like us to put flowers down through their benches so that people will travel down that way. We have this building down through here that they want them to travel. They don't want them to stay just on the square. They want them to go off of the square on the roads leading up to it. That is one thing the city could do. You can clean that up, make it look nice as you come up on the square. That's the thought process. I don't know that a pocket park's gonna go there. I haven't researched it that close. It would be nice. I'm certain people would enjoy it. There would be a nice set of stairs. People would enjoy that also. That doesn't mean that's what has to go there. This is the process. Whenever we have a project that is brought to us, that we do.
All right.
Is there questions?
Any more questions?
I don't have any questions. This has just brought a lot of attention on with social media, and it's, it's not about who owns it. I wanna clarify that. It has nothing to do with Patrick Gaunt's on it, owning it. Nobody's picking on Patrick, or, you know, or trying to divide the city, or if we're not for that, we're, we're not for the city to grow. So, you know, I wanna lay that all to rest, that nobody's being picked on here. We're elected by the citizens, and just wanna make sure that we do the right thing. And, you know, so that's why when we have issues like this, we bring it up and we discuss it. You know, we're adults here, and we can discuss things with people. There, nobody needs to be, you know, taking defense to anything. I just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing, and, and, and that's all. I just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing and, and, and that's all.
All right, any other discussion?
Mayor, I have that, a couple of questions if you may. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Jim, you, you, you speak of the, uh, the situation of the wall, uh, in, in, in your, in your estimate, what's the quality of it? I mean, I know you're not a, a structural engineer, so are you thinking, uh, we've got a lifespan there of five to 10 years or we got a lifespan of 25 years before anything happens to, to that, uh, to the wall?
I would say, I would say just, it's, in, with my opinion, I would think that our wall that's behind this piece of property, I'm, I'm thinking 10 to 15 years. Um, but the wall, uh, the more directly behind the, uh, county property, I'm, I'm saying the, the last, you know, uh, I don't know till we, till we, you know, look at it. Or, or could, uh, the one behind this property could go, could go 10, 15 years.
And Terry, to piggyback on that, I, I was gonna ask the same thing. I don't know if the wall would fall first or the building would fall first. Um, you know, and nobody knows that. I mean, they, they could be here 15 years from now or, or the building could fall down tomorrow and we could have access to the wall. Only God knows this, right?
That wall, that wall may, may still be standing when we're all gone, but, uh, that certainly, certainly something that needs to be looked at.
Yes, you know, back on January the 8th, when we had this before the city council and made a motion to refer back to commit, to the committee, the finance committee, and we had a good discussion on that. A lot of that discussion, uh, last Tuesday was, uh, from, uh, Mr. McGowan, Mr. Mads and others, uh, the mayor, several others in the room. And I think that what we might do is try to clarify, you know, where we stand on it and then obviously bring it back to the council so we're discussing it tonight. And as I shared with the council, excuse me, as the finance committee, uh, last Tuesday night, uh, you know, I would like for us to have the property, uh, to maintain the wall, but at the same time, uh, you know, I have difficulty in us investing any money if, if we're going to grant a, a, uh, and I, and I don't read another term on it, it's gonna tax deduction, cause it's not a tax deduction, it's not a tax credit. We accept it as a gift, then, you know, my opinion on that is that it's gotta be a gift for any building, any green, the vegetation has gotta be a vacant lot, uh, cause we're gonna have costs in it. And again, I go back to, I mean, if anybody else is wanting to give those property or merchandise or anything to the city, you know, if we've got any costs in it, then I don't think it's a gift anymore because, uh, you know, we might, we might tear it down, we're gonna have to do something with it. So if, if I say, you know, I'm gonna accept your gift, then I'm gonna have to put in what my cost will be to accept your gift and I'm gonna lower my basis that I've gotten that particular gift that you gave me. So it gets a little confusing there to me and, and, and maybe people in the financial department should run a lot better than I could, could think about it, but, you know, to, for us to get a gift, uh, whether it be, you know, years ago, properties like down into Mar Park, you know, we had people gift us land on those years ago and, and, and all that related property. Um, you know, we can't, we can't accept it, uh, we can't, we can't give some, some, the, some entity or some person or some organization, uh, a benefit of a gift. We've gotta put money into it, is, is my, my problem with it. Uh, I appreciate Mr. Gantz, you know, willing to, to work with us on it, but, you know, I, I just, I cannot even pay for it to my fellow council members and assistants of Glasgow, excepting it. If we got to, you know, spend money to tear it down, we gotta spend money on closing costs or, you know, we don't know what we're gonna get into. I'd love to have it, but, uh, I only want to have it if there's no building on it, if there's no vegetation on it, if it's down to, uh, being a vacant lot. And then that vacant lot is appraised for the city so that we can determine the basis in that particular property. Uh, and because we're, we, we don't know for certain that that wall is gonna fall for five years or 10 years or 15 years. And I just, again, as I mentioned in the finance committee last Tuesday night, you know, if we start doing this, then somebody's gonna come out to us and say, "Well, you accepted that property once, you said my property is next to a well and park, it's next to a corn park, it's next to, you name it." And then we're gonna sit around and say, "Well, you know, that could, we might do something with that." And, you know, what cost, what precedent we set in that, I fear that. I really do fear that and, and I don't wanna make a big thing out of this, um, but I think of a gift, that a gift in those strings attached, and here it is, it's ready to go and the city has no cost in it. So I, I, I want us to consider this as a council, that if we, that we move this way, uh, we will open ourselves up to, to other people coming to us or groups or organizations to, to succeed on them to demolish ours. Uh, and I, and I, that's my, my thoughts on it. I appreciate, uh, sending a couple of links to the finance committee and we had good discussion and good discussion tonight, so thank you.
Any more discussion?
I need to speak to the grants that Marna.
Yeah, if you'd like to, if you've got, if you've got enough information that you need to talk about.
Sure, we can talk about them. There's lots of grants that can be used if we chose to go with a park, which I'm not sure that's what we would do, but there's land and water grants. There's actually an AARP grant that just, uh, opened up here recently that we can utilize to do whatever we want with. So there's grant money to utilize, to add to it, uh, to make beautification, you know, uh, projects like when we took the trees out around the square, we did that and built the thing, you know, the beautification of the square is basically the city side of what we seen that we could do with a project. That's it.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any questions? Uh, let's see. One, one last thing, Rich, if you'll give me that, just for the sake of transparency, when this all came about, um, and, uh, Mr. Gantz said something about that he would like to, uh, maybe donate this to the city, I told him very quickly that I, you know, it's a good thing, but, uh, we can't consider taking it because we are not gonna pay to have the asbestos abated. So I told him the only way we could consider taking it to the council would be for him to get the asbestos out of it, which he did, and I'm looking at the, uh, final price right here of what he paid for that. It was 24,000, I can't find the price right here exactly, 24,000 and some odd dollars is what he paid to have, uh, the asbestos, uh, removed from it. So I guess what I'm trying to say is out of, uh, in being accurate, uh, he's not just giving us a building and saying, "Here, y'all run with it." He meant what I prescribed to him as the only way we can ever consider it is to consider it without asbestos. So he's got $24,000 of cash in it to make it to where the asbestos has gone. That's, I wanna be sure we're, we're clear on that.
Mayor, uh, can I add something too?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, back, back when these, uh, discussions first started on this, I, I well, it was with me, you'd asked me to see, see if I could get a price on what it would actually cost to tear this building down.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, I had to do a lot of research, find out which, which buildings it was and I talked to Patrick about it and got keys and went over and looked at it and I got a contractor over there to give us a price, give me a price actually what it would cost to tear this down. And, uh, uh, the price that I got was, uh, verbal, it was around $80,000. And, uh, you know, we, we both discussed, it was like, who in their right mind would give that kinda money for, for a gift, you know? Like, how, how can we reduce the cost on this to actually get this property? And I, and guys, it doesn't make me any difference one way or the other, but, um, the only solution I could come up with is for us as a Department of Public Works to actually tear this building down ourselves with, with just being the fuel cost.
Which is taxpayer money. That's something that taxpayers have, I, I've gotten numerous text messages and phone calls, the taxpayers do not want this. They don't wanna pay for it.
Okay.
And that's why I serve them.
All right, listen, I'm, I'm just stating, stating the facts. See, that doesn't make no, to me, it doesn't.
I understand.
I'm just stating the facts, what I, what I, what I was asked to get, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a good deal either way. It's, I'm just letting you know, it's, uh, $80,000 to tear it down and to save some money for the Department of Public Works could, could do it for around $5,000, $6,000. And that's, I mean, yeah, okay.
Hindsight's 2020, but I think the odds came 24,000 to get asbestos removed, I'd have sold it like you said you had it sold to the finance committee.
It's different from you, man. I'm trying to do what I think. That's my charitable heart, so.
Hey, maybe we should have started out with, "Would you pay the 5,000 to get it torn down?" Um, let's see, I guess we, we don't have any, uh, if there's no further discussion, let me think. Everybody's had the chance to, uh, ask a question or whatever. Um, anything else to be said about this before we?
I have one last question. If, if we, if we were to report with this, um, I don't, I don't know what value to place on it. Uh, we don't, we don't have an appraisal to see if Glasgow accepted.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think the appraisal that was done prior to it, uh, I, I wouldn't think the value is the same as it was when it was appraised earlier. Uh, and so, you know, what, what value is on the property, you know, we don't know that.
Yeah, well.
That's, that's another issue with it, is, you know, we don't, you know, we don't know what's worth.
Well, the city can only offer a.
We can't offer it to someone else and, and that's a, you know, that you don't wanna do that because it's not, we're not the, we're not the client, we're not the company.
Right.
We're relying on information given to another party, we didn't pay for the appraisal and so we have nothing in it. So we, I, and if I asked, you know, if I asked the city attorney, then, you know, we have no basis. We're, we're relying on, uh, information right to someone else that wasn't directed to us. Uh, so I think that's an issue, even though that's gotta be discussed with it, if the council does move to, to accept it, um, you know, what basis is.
Well, I just think that it would be more beneficial to us if it was offered to us and we owned something beside it. It would be like me having a house and having two neighbors beside me and then there being a lot beside them. Well, what use is that lot to me? I mean, we own nothing there. The county owns one section, Patrick owns the other, so if we tear this down to save the wall, then, um, then we create a parking lot for the county attorney to use if he decides to stay there instead of go to Justice Center or for whoever Patrick sells the building where Max Durham's at, for them to be able to park there and walk right to it. It's a convenience for the county and Patrick and not the city, so I can't go with this.
All right.
Hey, Max, I don't, I don't know if you understood or not, this, this is, uh, we've got a city parking lot and this, this parcel actually joins that parking lot that, that City Glasgow owns. I don't know if you got the.
Yeah, I understand the hunt.
Yeah.
So it is attached to city property?
Yes, yes, it is.
By the wall?
The, yes, the.
Okay.
Parking lot and then this piece of property actually joins it, yeah.
Well, and I will throw this, we've, we can beat it to death all night. One, and one thing to say to Marna, you're right, $5,000 is taxpayer money. Whatever we pay to keep that wall up there will always be taxpayer money. So as the mayor, I'm thinking, when's the time for us to buy into doing this? When somebody's gonna give us most of it or when somebody's going to build something that we've got to buy for $500,000 or $600,000 to go back there and fix it? It will always be taxpayer money that takes care of that wall. This is just the easiest way to get into it.
Like Councilmember Benell said, it's not a gift if we're having to pay to demolish the building.
No, well, I mean, if you wanna change the terminology, it's not a gift, uh, but it is the, I don't look at it as a gift. I look at it as our responsibility to maintain property that we own. There'll never be a, a less expensive way for us to put ourselves into a position to deal with a piece of property that we own. It'll always cost more money to, if, to get up in there, to try to keep that wall maintained, to build that, uh, retaining wall. It'll be taxpayer money at some point, uh, which is the only reason why that I'm even, that I think about this is that, uh, I'm thinking long-term. You know, it's not today. It's about what is it gonna cost us when the wall does crumble? What is it gonna cost us when the parking lot starts to cave in? That's where you get into the millions as opposed to $5,000.
Sorry, but I asked you, you say you're speaking long-term. I asked you what your vision was for the property and you said you didn't have one.
No, I don't. The vision I have is to keep the wall standing.
I'm just not sure the building won't fall before the wall, to be honest with you.
I don't have any way of knowing that. I'm, Jim McGowan is the only man in the room who could even speak to that.
My God. Yes, that, that is correct, Max. The wall's, uh, beams are pretty bad shape. It needs, it needs to be done.
Rich, did you have something to say about the appraisal?
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask the opportunity to, Councilmember Benell, your question about the appraisal, here, here's how I would answer that, and I don't mean to sound, uh, crass, but the, the appraisal more is for the benefit of Mr. Gantz if the council approved this. It doesn't matter whether we appraise it at $10 or $70,000 for our purposes. If we accept a charitable donation, that's fine. It's gonna be on him to document, uh, for his tax purposes, what the, uh, what the value of it is, because if that's, that's on him for.
Your appraisal's just for tax purposes?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, you know, he, he's gonna have to document what his charitable contribution would be for his tax purposes and that's what, i- in my opinion, that's what the judge, the, uh, appraisal's for. So I mean, it, that's the way I would answer that, Mr. Benell. I, I don't.
When we did it as an accident, we see financial records for that.
Yeah, I, I, I get that, yeah. Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, the city can only give him a receipt for a donation for the amount of the appraised value. We can't say, "Here's a quarter of a million dollars cause we like you." It has to be appraised for a professional appraisal to say, "This is the amount that we can issue you a receipt for a contribution for." Is that correct?
Well, I, I would even go further, Mayor. I, I don't know that there even need, would even need to be a receipt. I mean, the deed is gonna reflect what the fair cash value of it is. If, if the council approved the, the transaction, then it would be a deed from Mr. Gantz to the City of Glasgow and it would have, uh, what he believed to be the fair cash value the property was and that'd be, uh, of record, but that, but I, to, to Mr. Benell's point, he, that, that is a, a fair point, but that's more of an accounting, uh, budgetary, once it became accepted, not for purposes, I guess what I'm trying to say is for purposes of whether to take the gift or not take the gift.
All right. Any further discussion?
I got one more question. The only thing is, if we don't do something, even though Pat, we don't take it, he keeps it, sells it, we still gotta get back there. So whoever buys it from him can block us and say, "You gotta give me this amount of dollar to get back there."
Hey, we have access to get back there. It's just not the access that everybody would like.
So Jim, will you reiterate that? Do we have access to that wall at a cost of how much?
Morena's 100% correct. We do have access to the wall. We do have access to that area, but right now, if we all were to go over there, we, we would need ladders and, uh, lifts and everything to get down in there. I mean, it, it's a, it's amazing to get back here to this, to this area.
Well, that's because of the jungle growing back there that I talked about earlier. If that was cleared off and those trees and debris was not there, we wouldn't need ladders to get back there.
Talking about seven, eight years old growth rates.
That's a lot for behind the building, Jim. That's a lot of over, seven or eight years?
Hey, guys, can we?
Jim, what's the cost to take? If we don't have access through the front, what's your estimated cost to get back there of taxpayer money?
I, I don't, I don't have any numbers in front of me, but I would, I would be, it would be far as to say that it would be two, two to three times the amount, so.
Hey, guys, we set up and say all the things that we're willing to say, but most of these folks providing us information are paid employees for this city and they're doing the best they can and we just have to accept the information they give us. We're the ones that's gonna make a decision. You make a decision within your.
You make a decision within your rights as a city councilman, and we need to, we need to press on and quit chastising city employees just trying to do their job. Yes, we've discussed this, this went back and forth between the finance committee, we could be like in California. In hindsight, I don't think anybody would build a home in California. They're all getting wet, falling off the cliffs, so what? Who knew that was going to happen? That's hindsight. We also are starting to set a dangerous precedent here in this city and community. Only a few of us have, well, I'm not even going to include myself in this, only certain ones have the opportunity to donate to cities and counties, property of this kind of nature. We're setting precedents over and over again in Glasgow and Barron County, where we continuously harass through social media and through council members and fiscal courts, folks who are making donations. So what ended up happening is, folks will start saying, hey, if I'm going to make a donation, let me make my donation to Bowling Green, let me make my donation to Western Kentucky University or someplace like that. So, again, most of us, do we give at church? Do we take a tax write-off? I hope so. If you're giving at your church, you should do it, that's what the law says you're supposed to do. You donate property, you give gifts, and you take a tax write-off. Hey, property in the City of Glasgow is only going to go up in value. If that's a barren lot there and someone decides to come back, and if the city was to expand and we had skyscrapers, it would be worth more to us than it is. I think we need to go on and vote on this, yea or nay, one way or the other, and then let it fall where it falls.
So, are you calling the question?
Question.
Okay, all right, I have a call for a question to place the vote. I will ask the, let me check my, ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Lowry.
Yes.
Marion. Neil.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Witcher.
No.
Benel.
No.
Gaunt's has abstained.
Okay.
Kirkpatrick.
No.
One, two, three, four, two, four. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, four, four.
Okay, so we're tied. So I have to cast the deciding vote. I'll vote yes. So the final total is five in favor, four against, is that correct? Okay, motion carries. All right, we, let's continue with some more old business. All right.
Mayor, could I, could I mention one thing before we go to the next item?
Okay, all right.
Just in light of what the, the action of the council was, I think it's my responsibility to then mention the fact that we do need a contract with the city and Mr. Gaunt's outlining the fact that we need to take clear title to the property, and that if, I haven't, I haven't done a title examination determined, but obviously if there was some defect in the title, then we would not, my recommendation would be that it would, that this would be contingent upon being able to receive a clear title to the property. And I think that's, is our due diligence to do that. So I would ask the, I would ask you to ask the council to entertain a motion that, that we draft such a contract in light of the decision that the, that the council has made.
All right, you've heard his discussion, we're looking for a motion that would allow the city attorney to take this to the next natural step of doing a title search and proof of title.
Motion.
Motion by Marion.
Check it, Lowry.
By Lowry, okay, all right. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
I have a discussion point there. I still, I'm still bent on the appraisal, because to the city attorney, there'll be a consideration placed in that deed, correct?
That is correct, that is correct.
And what are we asking that consideration on?
It would be the appraisal unless we believe that, when it's a gift deed, it would be what the two parties believe the property is worth. It's not cash consideration like you're paying the purchase price.
All right, I just think that, that the amount we put onto, we put seventy thousand dollars on it, you know, I don't know what basis the city has for that, and, you know, I wouldn't want to sign a deed with not having my appraisal done, to say that's the value of it in the market, and I knew exactly what the market was like, but, but that's my opinion on that, so.
I think, to your point, one of the things that, that might be needed would be an updated title from August of 2023, or updated appraisal, just so that we know what, what the updated value is, if it's changed since August of last year. Can we include that in the motion? Yes, sir, I mean that.
Okay, so, um, did you do the original motion? Max did the original motion, would you consent to adding that to the motion, Max? For the appraisal? Current appraisal, to update the appraisal?
Yeah, I think that's what you were saying, right, Terry?
Exactly.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's fine.
That makes good sense, okay? Did we get a second?
I'll second that update.
All right, so you understand the motion that's on the table, correct? Everybody understand what it is? So I'll call the question, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, okay. So you have your assignment, right?
Yes, sir, got it.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, let's continue moving here with the ordinance authorizing the organization of a standing committee to be known as Entertain Glasgow.
This is the second reading of an ordinance amending ordinance 2019-2408, authorizing the organization of a standing committee known as Entertain Glasgow Committee. Whereas on August 12th, 2019, on second reading, the city adopted ordinance number 2019-2408, an ordinance authorizing the organization of a standing committee known as the Entertain Glasgow Committee. Whereas it is now necessary to amend that ordinance as it relates to the financial aspects of the Entertain Glasgow Committee and the compensation of the committee, excuse me, composition of the committee and the terms of its members. And now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Ordinance 2019-2408 is amended to read as follows. Section one, the City of Glasgow will organize a standing committee known as the Entertain Glasgow Committee. Section two, the Entertain Glasgow Committee shall have a minimum of five community members to be appointed by the mayor of the City of Glasgow, one member from the Glasgow City Council to be appointed by the mayor, and a minimum of one member from each city department, also appointed by the mayor, and the director of emergency management shall also serve on that committee. Section three, each community member of the committee shall serve a term of three years. The city council member shall serve on the committee for his or her term of office, and the other members of the committee shall all serve during their tenure of employment with the City of Glasgow or emergency management. The initial community member appointments shall be staggered so that not all community member terms expire at the same time. At the conclusion of the initial staggered terms for the community members, all future appointments or reappointments shall be for three-year terms. Section four, the Entertain Glasgow Committee shall have a chairman and a secretary-chairman, but the City of Glasgow shall keep and maintain all committees' financial accounts and shall maintain a separate bank account for all of the committee's operations. The committee shall not maintain its own bank account, and the committee's operations shall be a part of the city's annual budget. Section five, the mayor is empowered and directed to complete all documents and execute any municipal orders or otherwise, oversee the administration, organization, and furtherance of the goals and objectives of the committee. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you have heard the reading of the ordinance that basically brings the Entertain Glasgow Committee into the bevy of city committees. I'll entertain a motion that we approve that.
Motion.
By Councilman Neil, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Trigg. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, we do need to do a roll call, okay, all right, roll call, thank you, madam.
Marion.
Yes.
Neil.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Benel.
Yes.
Gaunt's.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
All right, we have a unanimous vote in favor of making Entertain Glasgow a part of the city committee system. All right, Rich, second reading?
This is the second reading on an ordinance amending annual budget for July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that the annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 is hereby amended as follows. Section one, there is hereby received the sum of seventy-two hundred dollars into the general fund administrative department sale of properties for sale of land. Section two, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred to the police department ammunition taser cart account for ammunition. Section three, there is hereby received the sum of forty-two thousand four hundred fifteen dollars into the general fund police department other revenue account for insurance, grant, reimbursement, and donation monies. Section four, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of twenty-six thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars to be transferred to the police department rent and storage account for vehicle and substation lease. Section five, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of twenty-seven hundred dollars to be transferred to the police department miscellaneous and other account for miscellaneous supplies. Section six, there is hereby received the sum of twenty-four thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars forty-one cents into the general fund opioid settlement account from the opioid settlement case. Section seven, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of one hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and one cent to be transferred to the general fund opioid settlement account for opioid expenses. Section eight, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of twenty-six thousand dollars to be transferred to the administrative contractual improvements account for a heating and cooling unit. Section nine, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund the sum of ten thousand dollars to be transferred as follows. Seventeen hundred dollars to the administrative technical equipment account, eighty-three hundred dollars to the police technical equipment account for the purchase of a bit defender. Section ten, there is hereby received the sum of ten thousand dollars into the general fund distributing seventeen hundred dollars into the administrative other revenue account and eighty-three hundred dollars into the police other revenue account from grant monies. Section eleven, there is hereby received the sum of seventy thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars into the general fund street department federal monies account from the TAP grant number two. Section twelve, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars to be transferred to the street department contractual improvements TAP grant account for a TAP grant improvement. Section thirteen, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund forty-four thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars to be transferred to the administrative other contractual services account for payroll and workers' comp additions after the insurance audit. Section fourteen, there is hereby received the sum of four hundred ten thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars into the sanitation landfill fund to landfill other revenue account from an insurance check compact, on the compactor. Section fifteen, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund nine hundred sixty-nine thousand two hundred dollars to be transferred to the landfill construction and maintenance equipment account for a new compactor. Section sixteen, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated sanitation landfill fund thirty-six thousand nine hundred dollars to be transferred to the sanitation maintenance and repairs account for roof repairs. Section seventeen, there is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated plaza fund twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred to the plaza maintenance and repairs account for boiler repairs. In section eighteen, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the reading, and you also have had a chance to read over, this is a number of budget amendments that we just have to periodically make. I would first of all entertain a motion that we approve this budget amendment.
Motion, Lowry.
Okay, we have, we'll give, Terry, since Terry's remote, we'll give him credit for the, for the motion. Freddie, you get the second. What discussion do you would like to have on this particular, there's a lot of information right here, you've had the chance to read over it. Treasurer Garrett is here, if you were to have a question, we could call her up, but any discussion?
I know last time there was some confusion about the concept of an unappropriated fund, and Stephanie, I know you were out dealing with an issue, do you care just to speak to that again, so everybody's clear of what an unappropriated fund is?
I believe she put that in the meeting, and the media covered that.
Well, I thought maybe if people didn't-
Especially with my name.
I, I don't, I don't know what you're speaking of, so.
I don't know what you're speaking of either, but an unappropriated fund is a fund that is sitting back, I'm going to make a demonstration, Rich, again. You have your checking account, and you have ten thousand dollars in it, and for the year, you know, six thousand of that is budgeted, and you have something through the year, your car tears up or something, that's going to take two thousand more, so you're going to go back to your checking account, out of that ten, you're going to take two more thousand and put it with that six, it's going to make you eight thousand, now it leaves you two left in your checking account from the unappropriated part. So that four thousand was unappropriated, you appropriated the six thousand to your budget, but when you went back to the unappropriated and got two thousand to fix your vehicle, you're taking from the unappropriated and putting it now into your budget, you're appropriated. I was just trying to put simple figures.
All right, thank you very much for that explanation.
So does each department, there's one on here that talks about unappropriated sanitation and landfill, and unappropriated plaza, is that just kind of built into every?
Fund, fund, so you have a landfill fund, and you have a plaza fund, they each have unappropriated fund balances, and those are the fund balances you're taking from. So the landfill will be your unappropriated fund balance, the plaza's unappropriated fund balance, the general fund's unappropriated fund balance.
Okay, other discussion? All right, I'll call the question, all those in favor of passing this budget amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and, oh, that's right, roll call, I'm sorry, I was, I'm listening too close.
Neil.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Benel.
Yes.
Gaunt's.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Okay, now, okay, all right, thank you very much.
Next item, mayor, is a municipal order appointing Andrea Gentry to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. On order of the mayor, Andrea Gentry is hereby appointed to the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board, Board of Directors, fulfilling a two-year unexpired term of Brian Clemmons, which expires March 31, 2025. This ordinance is adopted pursuant to KRS 83A 060, in that it was approved by the council today's date.
You have heard the reading of the municipal order, I'll entertain a motion that we approve it?
Motion.
From Councilman Neil, is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, all right, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. We have some new business to take care of, Rich.
This is a municipal order establishing the Entertain Glasgow Committee members. That whereas by municipal order 29-848, the initial members of the Entertain Glasgow- That whereas by Municipal Order 29-848, the initial members of the Entertain Glasgow Committee were established, and whereas since the adoption of the 2019 municipal orders, various members have left the committee and other members have been appointed. And whereas in order to update the committee members and to establish staggered terms pursuant to Ordinance 2024-3042, which was just adopted on second reading tonight, the municipal order is being adopted and executed. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, on order of the mayor, the following members are appointed to the Entertain Glasgow Committee, and the terms of each committee member are also set forth. Councilmember James Neal, serving during his term of office, the Superintendent of Public Works, serving during his tenure of employment, Director of Parks and Recreation, serving during his tenure of employment, the Police Chief, serving during his tenure of employment, Fire Chief, term of employment, City Hall Designee April Russell, serving during her tenure of employment, Director of Emergency Management, serving during his tenure of employment.
Yes, yes.
Trying to go through.
He's a.
Community Member Victoria Hunley, one year expiring February 28, 2025, Community Member Katie Bays, two years expiring February 28, 2026, Community Member Kelsey Stevens, three years expiring February 28, 2027, Community Member Jared Persley, four years expiring February 28, 2028, Community Member Matthew Compton, five years expiring February 28, And there is a note at the end of the municipal order that per the ordinance, each committee member shall ultimately serve a three-year term, however staggered terms are being implemented so that not all community members' terms expire at the same time.
All right, very good. All right, this is new business, and you, we've had a discussion about this, I will entertain a motion that we approve this particular arrangement, municipal order for Entertain Glasgow.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Okay, I can do this on a voice vote, right? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, Rich, we have some more exciting things to announce here.
This next item is a resolution that authorizes the installation of a safe haven baby box at the Glasgow Fire Department on Broadway Street. That whereas there is a program in place authorized by KRS 405.075 that provides certain protections to EMS providers, police officers, and firefighters that install a newborn safety device whereby pursuant to state law, parents are allowed to leave newborn infants younger than 30 days old at a staffed police station, fire station, hospital, or participating place of worship with a safe haven baby box without fear of incrimination, criminal prosecution, or allegation of neglect. Whereas a private donor, Leland Glass, has approached the city offering to donate the cost of acquiring, installing, and maintaining a baby box within the city limits of Glasgow so that the safe haven baby box program can be implemented in this community. And whereas the City of Glasgow desires to accept the offer of donation and to begin the process of implementing the safe haven baby box program. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. Paragraph one, the City of Glasgow accepts the offer of donation by Leland Glass to incur the cost of acquiring, installing, and maintaining the baby box within the city limits of Glasgow so that the safe haven baby box program can continue, can be implemented. But the city commits to keeping the program in place should the private donor elect to discontinue future funding. Paragraph two, the City of Glasgow shall execute a lease and service agreement with the manufacturer of the baby box, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A, and shall follow all policies and procedures outlined in the agreement to properly implement and maintain the program. Paragraph three, the baby box shall be placed at the fire station located at 203 South Broadway Street here in Glasgow. And last, paragraph four, Mayor Royce is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the actions contemplated herein.
You've heard the reading of the resolution. To get it up on the floor, I'll entertain a motion that we approve this.
Motion.
Okay, Councilman Neal has a motion, is there a second to approve this?
Second.
Okay, from Councilman Gantz. Now, do we have a discussion on this baby box proposal?
Under number one there, it says that if that person ceases to, you know, to pay for it, then the city is going to be picking up that, is that what it says?
Yes, sir.
Chief Rock has been the contact person on this endeavor. Chief, would you like to go to the podium and clarify anything that any of our council members might want to ask?
Yes, first of all, the donor is the one attached to this. There's actually multiple people that's helping him, and he's taking responsibility, he's the one that is ultimately responsible. The members of the Church of Christ was the ones who he's working with, and he's the name. We discussed this, if something was to happen to this individual in the future, the baby box will be installed. If you look in your contract, the lease, you have a $500 maintenance fee, you have an alarm fee, is roughly what's gonna take, and of course, the maintenance to continue this. The upfront fee is where the major cost is. And I think that it was put in there like this, it's, if this is here, it's such a great program, if something was to happen in the future, rather than say, we're shutting it down because we don't want to give whatever the maintenance fee and alarm fee is, that's why I think it's in there to continue it.
Okay.
And Councilmember Norris, I would point out, there, in that lease agreement, there is a 60-day right to terminate, so i-if the city had to pick up the cost for the future maintenance, if we determined at that point in time that that was not something that we wanted to do, there's a 60-day written notice to terminate.
You can terminate the program.
Okay. All right, good discussion, any other questions?
So what actually happens to this baby if they just neglect it? I mean, if you get, I mean.
I don't understand, William.
I mean.
I don't understand the question. If they neglect it, if you have a 30-year-old child.
Thirty days.
You'll be rebuked.
Yeah.
Now they can put it in the garbage bag and put it in the dumpster. Now this is a locked box, this, at our firehouse, like a safety deposit box, they open it up, and they shut it, and an alarm goes off, they cannot get the child back out. It's required for no cameras, no visual, anything, to condemn this person, and a lot of people say it's doing an awful thing, when actually they're doing a great thing when you consider a bag in a dumpster. And alarms go off, and all the people are notified. The reason it's with us is because there's more likelihood of volatility, of us being at house, then we will go with that baby, and it will get all the care it needs. It won't stay there an amount of time, it's just a safe place for them to drop it off, a new born child, it's secure, done, then we come in from the other side and retrieve the child, and he goes to, he gets proper care, everybody's involved.
This has been something that other fire departments have been asked to be involved in, is that correct, Chief?
That's correct, to be honest, though, there's, I did a little research, there's 23, my last numbers, in the state of Kentucky. That's a pretty long number for Glasgow to be 24. And just last year, Bowling Green had a save, they were the first save in the state of Kentucky. So I, I mean, I just, I find it amazing that it was so full, and I'm pretty passionate, this, this place was so full for all the other stuff, and this, it empties out. I mean, there's just no cost, in my personal opinion, for a child. The lady that started this was given over for adoption when she was a, her mother was a rape victim, and she started this on her own, and I've been, she, I talked to her, we FaceTimed when we decided where to put it, the originator. You know, it's just, I, I'm pretty conservative, and I've thought about this a lot, and I just see no negative whatsoever about it. I just, I've had people, when I first became chief, that asked me, if we could get one, it was just how the, it's too much money. I mean, it's hard to ask for $17,000, you know, but a gentleman asked me, and since then, I've had numerous organizations, and he said, you know, we want to do it on our own, they don't want to be known, but I think it's kind of a, I think it's something they started, you ever started something as a group, and when you finish it, it makes you tighter. It's just such a good feeling to have, like, they're asking nothing except for my building, and I have no problem whatsoever to give them whatever they need, if it could save a child.
Did you, did you say, when the fireman adopted the baby, did you tell us that?
Actually, one of them, I don't know which state, and I'm not for sure, but I heard that the one in Bowling Green might have as well, but, you know, I don't know, it's just, it's just a great thing.
I'd just like to say thank you to the gentlemen, you know, whether or not this goes through, I think it, I think it shows the heart of our community, and, and I appreciate you being willing to put that there, and, and prayers that, that when that alarm goes off, that, that you all, I'm glad they're there with you all.
I hope it never gets used, I hope it never does, but it's like when something bad happens, I hope it never happens, but if it does happen, I hope I'm there to help. I mean, that's what we want to do, that's why we train, we don't want it to be bad, but I'll promise if something bad happens, on my honor, Chief Howie's side, we want to be there because we know we're the best for the job. I thank y'all for your consideration, any more questions? And I apologize for my voice, I just, everybody at work seems to be pretty tickled, I'll have to admit.
Hey, it's actually improved during this meeting quite a bit.
It is, it's probably the quality that's not being, to be honest, so.
All right, any further questions? If not, I will call, actually, let's see, I will call, we have a voice vote on this because we have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the resolution passes. Thank you.
Next item is a resolution declaring certain Department of Public Works property as surplus and authorizing its disposition. That whereas the Glasgow Department of Public Works possesses certain personal property more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, whereas the personal property is no longer needed by the department, and the department has sufficient equipment available to meet the needs of the department, and whereas it would be suitable and consistent with the public interest for the personal property to be declared surplus and its disposition authorized by law. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, be it resolved by the city as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS 82.083, the following written determinations are made. The property to be surplus is the personal property more particularly described on the Exhibit A. B, the intended use of this property at the time of its acquisition was for the use and benefit of the Glasgow Department of Public Works and its operations. C, the reason why it is in the public interest to dispose of the personal property is due to its age and the fact that there are other similar pieces of equipment within the department which are capable of meeting all needs of the department, and continuing to maintain and keep the personal property described above would be redundant. Subparagraph D, the method of disposition to be used shall be either by public auction or by any other means permitted under KRS 82.083. Section two, the property described on Exhibit A is hereby declared surplus. Section three, this property shall be disposed of by public auction or by any other means authorized by law. Section four, Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to take all action necessary to carry out the actions contemplated herein.
You've heard the reading of the property that's to be declared as surplus, I'll entertain a motion that we declare this property surplus. Okay, is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Okay, any discussion about this property? Well, if not, then we will have a vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the resolution passes. We have some things to talk about, Rich, with regard to the new Justice Center, that some, some things that the city council needs to do to facilitate that, correct?
Yes, sir. The next three items on the agenda relate to the new Judicial Center project on Main Street. The project is now to the point of doing some demolition of existing buildings and other site work, and back in December of 2022, when the city sold the property to the Barron County Public Properties Corporation, the city agreed that at the appropriate time, portions of the public streets would be closed to accommodate the project. So these next three items deal with that and take care of that issue. The first one is a resolution authorizing the temporary and permanent road closure for the new Barron County Judicial Center project and authorizing and accepting a relocated Ford drive as a city street. That whereas on December 16 of 2022, the city sold and transferred certain property to the Barron County Public Properties Corporation for the construction of a new judicial, new judicial center. Whereas part of the agreement between the city and BCPPC was that certain portions of the public roads in or around the judicial center project would be closed as the project progressed. Whereas the judicial center project is now to the point where the closures need to occur, both temporarily and permanently, in order for the project to proceed. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, be it hereby resolved by the city as follows. One, the areas highlighted in blue and orange on Exhibit A attached here too shall be immediately temporarily closed during the judicial center construction project, and the Barron County Public Properties Corporation or its designated agent shall be and hereby is authorized to fence off the area and store any project materials or debris in the area to be closed. Paragraph two, when the judicial center project is complete, the areas highlighted in blue on Exhibit A shall be returned to public rights of way, but the area highlighted in orange shall be permanently closed and revert back to the property owner, which is the Barron County Public Properties Corporation, in fee simple absolute according to law, and the City of Glasgow shall simultaneously proceed with the passage of an ordinance, permanently closing the areas highlighted in orange pursuant to KRS 82.405. Paragraph three, the City of Glasgow shall simultaneously proceed with the passage of an ordinance, accepting the area highlighted in green and designated as the relocated Ford drive at, as a city street. Lastly, Mayor Royce shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to carry out the actions contemplated hereby.
All right, you've heard the reading of this temporary and permanent road closure, I'll indicate, I will entertain a motion that we pass this particular resolution.
Motion.
From Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, by Witcher.
Okay, now, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion about what this particular resolution involves? If there is no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, resolution is approved. We have a couple of ordinances to deal with, Rich.
And mayor, these are the ordinances that were referenced in the, in the resolution. The first one is a, an ordinance that permanently closes portions of the existing Ford drive. Again, in December of 2022, the city sold and transferred certain property to the Barron County Public Properties Corporation for purposes of constructing a new judicial center. Whereas part of the agreement between the city and the corporate, Barron County Public Properties Corporation was that certain portions of the public roads in or around the judicial center project would be closed as the project progressed, specifically portions of existing Ford drive, which would revert back in fee simple to the Public Properties Corporation who owns the property in or abutting the areas being closed as shown by Exhibit A and highlighted in orange. Whereas pursuant to KRS 82.405, the Barron County Public Properties Corporation, being the only property owner in or abutting the public way to be closed, has consented to the closing of the public way, subject to the provision that all property contained within that public way revert back to Barron County Public Properties Corporation, who is the only owner in or abutting the public way in fee simple according to law. Whereas an affidavit pursuant to KRS 82.405, Subparagraph Two, has been signed by the Barron County Judge Executive as agent for the Barron County Public Properties Corporation, again, the property owner in or abutting the public way to be closed, and that affidavit is attached as Exhibit B. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS 82.405, Subparagraph Two, the following findings are factored made. The Barron County Public Properties Corporation is the only property owner The Barron County Public Properties Corporation is the only property owner in or abutting the public way proposed to be closed. Subparagraph B, written notice of the proposed closing has been given to the aforesaid property owner, and C, the aforesaid property owner has given its consent to the closing ordained herein as shown by Exhibit B. Section 2, the aforesaid public way, known as Ford Drive, highlighted in orange on Exhibit A, is ordered closed, subject to the following provision. Fee simple absolute ownership of the property contained within this portion of public way being closed shall revert back to Barron County Public Properties Corporation according to the law of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Okay. All right. And Clerk Simmons was just pointing out that there was, in your packet, after the resolution, or after the ordinance, there is an affidavit on behalf of the Barron County Public Properties Corporation that needs to be considered as well. So flip over, it's labeled, labeled as Exhibit B.
It's after the next.
It's after the next ordinance. In other words, it...
No, this is it. This is it. This is the right one. Closing Ford Drive, yeah.
Okay, all right. So I would entertain a motion that we go along and grant this request in the form of an ordinance, closing portions of the existing Ford Drive.
A motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Lowry.
Is there any further discussion on this item? If not, we'll have a roll call vote?
Lowry.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Whitaker.
Yes.
Benel.
Yes.
Gauntz.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Motion passes, the ordinance passes, and we have one more.
This is the ordinance accepting the relocated Ford Drive as a city street. That whereas Jim McGowan, Superintendent of the Department of Public Works, has inspected the drawing for a relocated right-of-way, which is a 50 feet, which is 50 feet in width, and contains 16,648 square feet, more or less, as shown and designated in green on Exhibit A attached here, too, which is designated as relocated Ford Drive for the inclusion as a city street in the city of Glasgow. Whereas the Superintendent of the Department of Public Works has determined that the proposed public way, if it meets and complies with the standards of construction for streets in the city, should be included and accepted as a city street upon completion of the Judicial Center project. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the relocated Ford Drive, being a right-of-way 50 feet in width and containing 6,000, 16,648 square feet, more or less, designated in green on Exhibit A, shall be and is accepted and approved as a city street, on the condition that, when the Judicial Center project is complete, it shall comply with all standards for construction of streets in the city of Glasgow, as shown by a written report confirming same by the Superintendent of the Public Works, which shall be filed with the city clerk. Section 2, once the Judicial Center project is complete and a written report by the Superintendent of Department of Public Works has been filed with the clerk, confirming that the relocated Ford Drive complies with all standards for construction of streets in city of Glasgow, the relocated Ford Drive will be deemed accepted as a city street, and the city shall be responsible for maintaining same. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Okay. You've heard the reading of this ordinance, accepting the relocated Ford Drive as a city street. I'll entertain a motion that we approve this particular ordinance.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second, Kirkpatrick.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? If not, they tell me I don't have to do a roll call vote, so I will do a voice vote on this. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
All right, Mayor, the last item is an ordinance amending the city's Code of Ordinances, Section 110.27, which increases the insurance premium fees assessed by the city of Glasgow. That whereas the city of Glasgow's Code of Ordinances, Section 110.27, currently assesses an insurance premium fee of 5% on every policy of insurance, except life and health, which is currently at a fee of 2%. Whereas these established insurance premium fees have remained the same since their inception in 1966. Whereas the city's Occupational License Administrator has researched this issue across the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and has determined that the city of Glasgow, for its size and population, is extremely, extremely low in terms of its insurance premium fees. And whereas on February 20, 2024, the city's Finance Committee considered this issue, and now recommends to the city council that the insurance premium fees be increased, such that the insurance premium fees now be 5% for all policies of insurance, including life and health. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the city's Code of Ordinances, Section 110.27, shall be and hereby is amended to read as follows. And I'm not going to read it verbatim, but what, what it does is it makes it a 5% insurance premium fee across the board for all policies of insurance, not just, and it does not accept out the health and life. It's 5% across the board.
All right. We'll entertain a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance, amending the Code of Ordinances insurance premium fee.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. What about discussion? Any discussion? We have Nick Hurt here. He is the city tax assessor. I don't know if there's any questions you want to ask him, or Nick, is there anything you want to say about this, like what you did in the Finance Committee meeting earlier this week?
I can say that upon starting to research this, this was something that just happened a couple of weeks ago. I received an email, got to look in, the Department of Insurance had said that if there's any changes that need to be made, it has to be within 100 days before July 1st. So that's why it kind of sped up the process.
Okay.
Going through the ordinances, I found that it was instituted in 1966, hadn't been changed. Along with the email, I have a list, I'm going to pass it out, if you want to see it, you can see it, I have a lot of notes all over it, so, that it's about 22 pages of cities and counties in Kentucky, and their interest, or their rates on their insurance premiums. I pulled 32 different cities that are relative in size to Glasgow and in proximity. And the average of those 32 cities across the board was 7.3%. Some were around 10%, some really close were down to 5. Most of them were around 7 to 8. So upon seeing this, I thought it might be best to bring it before the council about increasing the rate on the life and the health. Again, I will say this as well, life and health are probably two of our smallest in our insurances. So it's not going to be that great of an increase. I'm hoping that approximately $200,000 in revenue will be found by this.
Okay.
Is there any other questions?
Nick, you, Nick, you might point out, too, real quick, that the difference between collecting the life and health premiums versus the other, the life and health is for the, only the initial, correct?
The life is. The health, I misspoke at the Finance Committee meeting the other night. The life is only on the first year premiums. So if you take out, I used to sell insurance, so, if you take out a life insurance policy, you'll pay your first year premiums. That fee is only on that first year. When you start, when you start paying the second year, that fee is not added on to that. It's clear. It's basically, that money is just going to go to the insurance company.
Does it increase if you, say, the city employees' rent?
According, I'll have to look at the ordinance, but I believe on the ordinance, is it, is it on the city employees?
Is, let's see.
There was something...
No, it's accepted, it, this, this was in the original, too. The premium shall not include premiums received for insuring employers from liability for personal injuries to their employees or death, workers' comp, and shall not include premiums for group health insurance, which would include city employees. That, so that, to answer your question, it does not, it would not apply to the group.
But that's not just necessarily city employees.
Right. It'd be any group policy.
Any kind of group.
Right.
And that does not, I will say this, that does not include any kind of life insurance that a city employee takes out separate. It would be on that.
So do I, say, in the future, increase the budget enough to cover this 2.5% increase? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir.
All right.
No, sir.
Is it income?
Just going to be extra money.
Yeah, income, it'll be income, yeah.
It's just, it's a steady insurance, or insurance quarterly is a steady revenue stream, and this is just going to increase it. And it's not going to increase it by a huge amount, but it is going to increase it.
But we'll still be below the average of...
Yes, sir.
23 or 25 in check.
Yes, sir. We will be, we will be running with my hometown a fountain run at 5% across the board.
Other discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ordinance carries. Coming up on Friday of this week is going to be the 30th anniversary of the 911 Dispatch Center, with they opened up over here at the, what used to be the city building, it's now the 911 Center, but Friday, they're going to celebrate the 30th year that they've been set up like that, and they're going to have a birthday party over there from 11 until 1. Is that right, April?
What?
11 until 1?
Right, yes.
Okay, all right. I want to get the right hours there. Yeah, so anyway, so anyway, they wanted to invite everybody over there for that Friday. And then I also got a text from Chappie Rice, who wants me to invite everybody to the 48th Annual Cave City Ham Fest, Saturday, March the 2nd. Gates open at 7:30. You know Chappie, and this is a gigantic ham fest. You'll be seeing people from all over the place. All right?
There'll also be cake at the 911.
Okay, yes, I didn't want to say too much about that because I didn't know what you had worked out, but anyway, okay.
Cake. They do when they work out.
Okay, all right, cake for the, and it's, you know, it's a really, it's a, it's a neat operation, it really is. I just want to say one thing. If we sat up here every other week and voted nine to nothing on everything we did, we wouldn't be doing our job. Part of our job is to think these things through and make the right decision based on how you feel like it pertains to you and your constituents. So in my mind, when we have a vote that's not unanimous one way or the other, we're doing a good job. And that's what I would like to close with tonight, quite honestly. And I thank you all for being here, and we'll try again. It says here on March the 11th, is that right? Okay, all right. Any other further discussion? I'll sound a gamble. Thank you all for your patience.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, okay, I'm sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, from James?
Second.
Second? Anybody else? We need a third? All right? We're done. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
After you said that, I got to thinking, did we even have a question?
I don't know. I was going on the...